That's all we need to order at 6:30. First item on the agenda, welcome everybody, first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on March 8th, 2022.
I'm gonna move the minutes to March 8th, 2022.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is audience of citizens, may I just come before the board? Do I am?
Yes, I'm here tonight on behalf of the Deep River Republican Town Committee to endorse Fred Jordan to become a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Fred is an knowledgeable citizen and businessman of high integrity. In our opinion, he will be a valuable addition to the Planning and Zoning Commission, execute duties effectively, and with the best interest of citizens of Deep River. And Fred would like to say a few words.
Let's have a seat Fred, you can get on the camera.
I've been with Deep River for a long time, I've been with the PSC for a long time. I know that there aren't enough people volunteering for boards, and this is one that I think falls particular interest to me, especially on the planning side of it. I see every town's and what their progress is. Do you think that I have a perspective for the health along those lines? I think we want to preserve the town as what it is, but we also have to get it grown in such a way that contributes to the tax base, so we're really happy in residential. I think that we've got to do some real hard work to get that balance out of there.
Thanks, I, we got your email, we emailed you yesterday, the response to that.
We're getting it back, I don't know how long it's been, Tom, I have my own, my own. Oh, okay, Tony pulled up, forwarded, okay, yes, I got it.
So we'll, we'll be speaking with you then this week or so, and we'll hopefully, you know, get to a, get to a conclusion relatively quickly and move forward. I appreciate your interest, I had a nice long conversation with Ted McCantsy yesterday.
I've known Ted for about four years.
That's what he said.
We've had our ups and downs, but
That's what he said.
we know where, you know, we both have our heart and good things for that.
Exactly, yep, yep. We all had that same I think we all had that same time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Derek?
You go.
Derek, come on up.
I'm gonna be like two seconds. I'm, I'm here to show my worth for Fred also. Alright?
Thank you.
While, while we're on this, if Fred would be, I think everybody does.
That seems like we've got, I'll give mine.
He's still wearing a horse. Never mind.
What, if anything, is the town doing for ransomware?
For ransomware, or are we saying with cybersecurity that we've, we've been working on? And we're, you know, we're working with our insurance company, with our IT people to stay on top of it as much as we can.
And we budgeted it for
In fact, we probably speak with that a little bit tonight, because we budgeted some additional funds to ensure that we can get it.
Please don't just got held up.
It was on the news tonight.
Yeah.
And Bitcoins, they wanted Bitcoin.
Well, you know, we're, we're doing our best, it's, it's an interesting time, because the insurance companies all said we don't want to insure anybody anymore, so.
They're training programs for
Yes, we do training here every year, once a year.
Yeah.
We'll just try and encourage people.
That would make sense.
Yes, it would.
Get an extra bill for 200 grand.
Yep. Yes, it would.
I understand that you have a location for these new speed bears.
Yeah, we're, as, I, I think that Tom probably mentioned to you, we're, we're in the application process.
Any ideas?
I, I don't know, I would hope it'd be soon. There is some additional paperwork that we need to get to.
Okay.
And we're following up, that they need a map and all that.
What's the location of the place?
In front of the package.
Great, cool, good spot. But you gotta let me know that if that is a long time, you use the power from the end to
Yeah, no, it's a solar powered thing, so.
Oh, the old one?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
If there's a prolonged period of time for approval and installation.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we can, I think that needs to be battery, and it's just a matter of getting over there, taking it down, putting it back up.
Um, one of the, any, any possibility, I know you do a spring cleanup, but downtown, all those students, we've got
Yeah, we were out here yesterday doing this, we're gonna try to keep moving up, we just got this sweeper ready to go, it should be out. Probably gonna wait until, until April 1st, just to, or at least look at the long range forecast and make sure we don't, we don't have much more to say on that.
Surprise spring, slow spring.
Impossible, yeah.
It is.
So, yeah, so we've lived here a long time, we know. Yeah. Cool, thanks.
Along those lines too, is the GOP's got two spots marked out, kind of across the street from a neighbor's house, who had called before you did.
I think they're putting some signs up, some signage, curves or something like that.
Okay, does it have anything about the curving from that house yet, or the drainage in front of the ambulance barn?
Well, the drainage in front of the ambulance barn is, you know, we spoke with them about that when it was, when they were repaving. Apparently they didn't address it, because it's still happening, and we'll continue, continue to remind them, thanks.
Kind of small, but along the line of the sidewalks and the streets and everything, Elm Street, just between 32 and 34, there's a, a big square that's already robed and now, well.
Okay, we'll take a look at it, we're, trying, actually that's one of the grants that I'm trying to get for is to replace all of that sidewalk from, really from Union Street all the way back up to the highway. And maybe if we can get it, get it on the other side as well, because all the kids walking down from that neighborhood, it'd be nice to keep them on the same side of the road.
This is on, on Elm between that Union going this way.
Yep. Okay, thanks. We should, actually, the, the town crews should be noticing that, so they're out and out sweeping the sidewalks to get whatever's on them out into the, into the road for when we come by with the sweepers, as well as trying to open up some, you've noticed around town, some of the sidewalks are getting kind of narrow, so we're trying to widen those, getting those back to where they're supposed to be. So anything like that, it should be making note of, and we can get out there and try to repair. Jane?
Um, what I've asked for before is a committee to investigate ways, best ways that Deep River can use the COVID relief money, it's a lot of money, and I think we ought to collect some good minds, I don't know, I would be somebody that would be good on that, but I'll put my name forward, but not emphatically. There are some other good people that seem to have a background, something with my help, but I think that's something, we've, we've got to get some of these committees out.
Okay, thank you.
All, all those lines of committees, I'm curious as to if there's that progress in these community, the community to work on the Portland housing plan.
Yep, we're trying to, trying to get that going, I think we're trying, we're trying to get a meeting together for next week, and I know that you're, you're interested in being on.
Right, but I'm worried about is, I, I went to the website and read it a little more, they haven't finished their plan yet, for River Park, so, and then we have to do a preamble and see what is our vision, and then what's our recommendation. And I'm thinking, depending on when they finish that, maybe it's time to start thinking of our vision and recommendations, just get the ball rolling up.
Yeah, we, we, we're
So great, thank you, so we don't have to wait for River Park, we can take a step forward.
Yeah, we're not going to wait for River Park, we just use them to give our students a foundation to go upon.
When's, what's the deadline on that?
July 1st. Part of that.
What has to transpire, we don't
Not that much, we're just, we're gonna just, the committee's gonna come up with a recommendation, we're not gonna try to change the world, we're just gonna satisfy the requirements from the state, and then give the Planning and Zoning Commission, Economic Development Commission, and other interested commissions an opportunity to work on how we can better develop the housing industry in this. We're not, we're not gonna try to reinvent the wheel in three months, or four months, or six months, whatever, so we're trying to, try to work with this as methodically as we can, satisfy the state requirements, and, and move the town forward in the way that the state is, is insisting that we do, but we're not, we're not in any effort to, to try and revamp our zoning regulations in four months. And I think it's better for the Planning and Zoning Commission to do that than not.
Will, will this committee be on the website?
Probably not.
Why not?
It doesn't need to be.
Well, that was what they said about the sustainability too. Do we have any idea what the other towns are putting for us? See, I had a call when I went to the, to meetings on River Park, I thought they'd put for the plan, and then we'd look at it, and we think, does that make sense for us? But actually, from what I understand now, it's, it's their research and the demographics, economics, et cetera. And then we have to come up with our own plan.
Right.
And I'm, I'm just curious if, if we have any input on what, what's happening around us with
Any input? No, we can certainly look at what other towns have done. Sabre has already done theirs, I think, I want to say Durham might have already done theirs. There are, there are communities around that have already got finished, but they were not waiting for the River Guard, they weren't participating in the River Guard, they were just moving on their own. Madison, I think, is also. Chester, I think, is about the same boat as us, and Essex as well. Jane?
So there are two committees, one for this housing and one for the COVID relief money, and we'll have no idea who's on the committee, and we'll have no idea when they're meeting, or what they're doing?
I don't know about that, Jane, we're still in the process of putting it together.
Well, can you put
But that's probably the case, yeah. We'll take a look at it, I appreciate the idea, it's a good thought, and we'll take a look at it, we're certainly not trying to hide anything, but there's, you know, there's, there's no need to put it on there, it doesn't have to, it doesn't require an agenda, it doesn't require anything like that, we'll certainly post the meetings, people are welcome to attend, we're not trying to hide anything, but whether, you know, what are we gonna do for agendas and things like that, no, I doubt we're gonna do. I know, thank you.
Any update on the economic development, sorry?
I know it's been posted, I know that they're receiving their responses and replies, I know there were a couple of glitches in it, some of the things got backwards, but I don't know, I don't, don't know how long it's gonna be out. I think, I think actually we'll start seeing in some of our storefronts, posters for folks to, to put their, use their cell phone or something, and click, and click onto it, so they can get to it.
Was it 10% necessary, well, participation, is that for the people who received the deed, or the town?
The town.
The town population?
Yeah, the town population, we get 10% of the town population to participate.
So 400?
Yeah. Yeah, I think there's a couple hundred already, that have replied. They have to go a little off. Anybody else?
One last question, Jen, I have the number eight, could you just elaborate on the executive session, what, what sort of the specific topic there?
We're negotiating a contract, the contract with our union is, is ending this year, we're, we're in the process of negotiating another contract.
Okay.
Been doing that for a few months now, I wanted to inform the board of selection, that's where we're at.
It, it would just be helpful if there was sort of some indication, specific topics sort of put on the agendas.
Okay.
I mean, like, not to pick on Nick, but even just his name is listed, and there's no real topic as to why it's helpful, to kind of know what those items are.
Thank you. Anybody? Thank you all, um, let's see, the next item on the agenda is tax refunds from the tax collector. This month, we've got three refunds totaling $8,991.51. Look like there's a motion to refund that, yeah.
I'll make a motion to, to tax refunds in the amount of $8,991.51.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks. Okay, Mr. Olson, next item is you, if you want.
You want, you can pull me to the end, but everybody else is here, you don't need to wait until the end of the meeting?
Okay.
Fire department's here, I guess.
Okay, next item, we'll come back to, the next item is a discussion of Sure. I don't think so, let's, let's Just make a motion to, um, let's have, ask for a motion to, to move item five down to items
Seven and a half.
I'll make a motion to move item five down to seven point five.
And so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next discussion, actually the next two items are just something that we have been speaking about for a while, but I want to get it back in the floor, because it is something that we're going to need to do this year, and if there are, we need to talk about how we're gonna go after it, whether we're going to wait for the budget or move forward, even though the budget is only three months away, that three months is, could be quite a bit as far as expense goes, and it could be quite a bit as far as lag goes before receiving these trucks, yeah? So, the first item is a discussion of tanker truck for the fire department, I see we have a, a couple of chiefs here today, if you want to address it at all, I, I really just want to bring it back to the front, we're looking at a tanker truck that's housed up in Winthrop. We've had, we've owned the truck for 12 years, but it's a 33-year-old truck, and it's, the fire department has attempted to, to look at replacing parts around it, or even just replacing the chassis and maintaining the tanker itself. All advice has been against that, it, it's just, it seems like it's putting good money after bad, where the truck, the tanker, the saddle. So the, the department is, is looking to replace that, and along that way, the fire department has raised 125,000 dollars towards the total cost of 395, so they're asking the town to put up 270.
And that's basically buying the chassis.
Well, we haven't got to that part yet, similar to
Yeah. A substantial part of it.
I did, I did a little research today after a lot of
Oh, come on up, fill us in.
So the truck, as Angus said, the truck's 1989, we bought it, or actually the town of Deep River bought it from Durham, Durham retired it around 2008, so it was about 19 years old when Durham retired it. We bought it, did a lot of work to it ourselves, George Happ would be painting, a lot of the work we did in-house of mounting tools and removing stuff for paint pot. So, we've run it, um, we've run it ever since, so since 2008, so 14 years or so, we've been running.
And the model year again is what?
1989. 1989, um, the chassis, the Ford, the body, and tank is a
SNS.
SNS, same company that made Tankers for, well, this one for Durham and also Killmore, um, back in the day, so again, retired by Durham at 19 years old. It's an 1800 gallon tanker, everything, right now, we're looking to replace it with a 2000 gallon tanker, the, the most of the ones that are out there are 2000 and 3000, you go to a 3000 gallon tanker, it's a tandem axle chassis, we want to stick with a short, single axle chassis like we have now, so it'll be 2000 gallons, have its own pump, so we can pump off its own water, or go to a dump site and dump its own water, as far as calls, roughly, just quick numbers today, about 30%, between 30 and 40% of the overall calls, so between 50 and 60 call annually that truck does. It was just out today again for another car accident as a blocker, so that's what I was able to kind of put together today.
Great, thanks, you know, we're not, we're not gonna move anything today, it was fun to get the information out there, make the town aware a little bit that this is what we're looking at. I, I will probably push to try to do this as quickly as we can, you know, maybe next month we'll have another meeting, and then the next board of finance, next board of finance meeting.
Well, from what I understand, chassis are, we've said before, chassis are close to 18 months out, yeah, so, and these are commercial chassis, you know, so whether it be the plow truck or the tanker, if you want to get a truck within two years, you almost have to get the chassis going as soon as possible.
And the costs are just going up and up and up and up?
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, the efforts of the fire department to raise the additional funds is, is, you know, certainly appreciated, and we don't go all the way as for, for no commitment, this is happening, it'll be easier on the towns.
Yes, for sure, that's what we're trying to do, yeah.
Yeah, we appreciate it, so we'll talk about this again at the board finance meeting.
No more questions for me, or?
No, thank you. Excellent.
Thanks, take it on the short axis.
But the durability in the rural, rural sections as for Tankers are needed.
Yes, next item up is the purchase of the plow truck, again, just information, we spoke about this a few months ago, we got a proposal for, I think, 295,000. I think, that actually might be higher, might have been, I don't have that in front of me, but again, it's just for information purposes, that, that bid or proposal is no longer valid, it's a, a, they're keeping their bids for such a short time, we have to get ready to go, so that we can move on.
And the, and the truck that this is replaced, this whole was what replaces, is a, an older
It's actually Smithy's old truck, so it's, again, I think it's 30 something years.
Yeah.
And it's, uh, it's, it's time for it to
They've, they've replaced four boards because of us.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, it's been reached, whatever we can to extend the life of it, we've done, we can't do anymore, and it, it needs to, it needs to be replaced, it's, I think we have enough, well, it passed all the safety inspections, so it's safe.
Yeah.
It's not a good truck for us to be driving around anymore. But, we're gonna have to keep it running, because the proposal said 18 months, so it's another winter we're gonna go through without it, so I would like to get it going as quickly as we can, which is why we're starting to have the conversation.
What size truck is this?
Yeah, I think
Six. It's a six wheeled one, definitely, like, like you have.
It's, it's, it'll, it'll be, hopefully, what we're looking for is the same truck that, that one is driving in Winthrop right now, it's got the, the, the front wheels, the front axle is recessed a little bit, so it's a little bit easier for driving around the country roads and things like that, Chris is driving one up in Winthrop, and it seems to be very good for the, for those roads.
I'm probably here to be guys to get it figured out, and then order
That's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, what's going on with the dump trucks is they are, now they're panic buying, so they've already been stressed out with the stainless, with everything going on with war and everything going on, they're actually putting out more money, making it worse. So the stainless steel bodies, instead of buying 100 grand in metal, they're putting out 500 grand, they're buying more, and it's
The demand is driving things up, right?
Things are worse right now.
Yeah.
Well, you know, that's why we're having the conversation, other than waiting until, until the budget comes up and see what happens, so we really want to get the conversation going, so, just to keep everybody posted, that's where we're headed. Any questions in the air, the cops? Thanks, okay, Nick? Seven and a half, you're up.
Yeah, I, I want to circle back to our conversation.
Yeah, come on up.
All right, uh, last, last meeting, the property that the town owns, I spoke with Robin a little bit about it, I've got some history on it. I know some of your concerns were, you know, concerns about, you know, do we have to get it reappraised, you know, blah, 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 and that aspect of things, Robin informed me, it's been off the tax roll now for seven years. That the appraisals that she does for values are current on it, and she felt that the appraisal was adequate on it.
I'm sure it is, I don't think I said we were gonna get an appraisal, I think I said we're gonna talk to Robin to get what the value is.
Right, so she said, she says current, so I had a conversation with her about that today. And, you know, I wanted to circle around about, you know, how those, you know, we have Mr. Lee here, we should, we can talk about it, but, you know, Dick's whole plan down there was, you know, he was very into the businesses of that industrial park, and people like Mr. Lee, people like Tim Moir, everybody who was offered an opportunity down there to grow their business, because they're kind of in Deep River. And I think that's very important to follow, you know, if this lot, if we could move forward and purchase it, you know, I'm in Deep River, I have my businesses up there, as you know, and I think following that philosophy and trying to, you know, purchase this, this is important.
I appreciate that, when we, when we put it out to bid, we'll have virtually the same language that, that was in the last offering of those properties.
Okay.
There are numerous people that over the past couple of years, who have been asking for that property, so we're gonna have to, you know, put it out as fairly as we can, it's not gonna be, I think the last, last time it was more of a selection of folks that, that offered to buy it for
They went down and asked people in the park first, and I think that's important, because, you know, we have people there establish their businesses for a reason, and if it's not me, maybe someone else in the park deserves it, but I think it's important to grow that park, if people can, people grow their business.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, you know, all the history up there is small businesses that were from Deep River, even holding on to places that had, had an accepted bid on that property was started out in the Deep River, I think you did it.
Yeah, so, Tim and
And it's Tim, yeah, so, you know, it's, it's, we're gonna try to continue that, I know we've got a lot of folks that are interested in it, as I told you, we're gonna work out that, that RFA, and we'll go from that. It's gotta be as fair as we can, I think, you know, we can put favors, criticism to Deep River folks a little bit, but, you know, all the kind of, all the conversation about how things are done here, to make sure that this happens, it's, it's legally in this.
I think, I think the idea of, of, a number of bidding, I don't think is adequate, I think there should be an application process, and it should be a few buddy guys who, who thinks who. And the only reason why I say that is, is because the two lots that are sold there are, where it was part of the business development, they gave them an opportunity and said, we will lease this land to you, and we will sell you the land in 30 years, but this is enough for you to go to the bank, get a loan, grow your business, and you can come back, and you got a set price on your lease for a dollar for 30 or 40 years, and then you got, you've got a number in 2015 that you had to pay in 2065. So, why would we say on the last lot, we're gonna turn it into a bidding war, and maybe the number goes high, or maybe the number goes low, that wasn't the incentive behind the grant money. It wasn't to go out and, and drive, drive boss out of the business.
Yeah, I'm not sure that there was any grant money involved in that particular project, but, um, but I, I understand what you're saying, I like the idea.
It was a standard
I'm just throwing, I'm just throwing some initial thoughts onto that, and the subjective issue that goes along with a, with an application process, frankly, it's been a little bit fragmented. I would, I would love to go to, to do that, but because of the subjectivity involved in that, someone who is not chosen could take offense to, not just take offense, but to contest that, so we've got, got to explore that, but I love the idea, and I want to look into it.
Yeah, thoughts on that? I sort of echo what Angus said, I, I don't want, I don't want, because I think, you know, I had spoke about this, no matter how we do it, it's gonna be a tough decision, and I'll throw it right on camera. If you end up with a property, you got it because of your uncle's a selectman, if Tim Lee gets the property, if he's interested in it, he got it because of the fire chief. If, if Melissa Gates gets it, she got it because she's willing to bet. That's where the fairness is gonna be tough, and I, I don't want the assumption of, to perceive that we've done something wrong, we get hammered as it is that we do things wrong here, I mean, a little bit, so I hear you, we had a long conversation here two weeks ago, and I'm glad we spoke, but I, I want to be fair, most fairish playing, as long as I'm sitting here.
I, I think, you know, I, I understand that, I respect that, I think it's, you know, I can't bash Tim Lee, he's a building beautiful, so, you know, and I hope that you guys weigh in, that, you know, I've done a great job, I've grown a tax base on my hill probably 15, 65,000 dollars to Deep River, I have 14 people showing up in that rental building for employment every day, and I hope that, you know, ideas and, and moving forward of what's best for the town economically is also considered, you know, Tim's done a great job, he's got probably 15 employees now, you know, and that was a home run for the town, and, you know, before we just decide on a number, whose last name is involved, I think there's a bigger picture in the background. You know, how we go about, you know, choosing that, that person is, you know, should be considered all.
Okay, absolutely. I agree, at least I respect both of you. Absolutely. I agree. At least I respect both of you gentlemen for establishing a nice tax roll for the town. Bringing people into our town as new employees. I respect that. Congrats on both of yous. But again, puts us into a tough situation of how to decide. Maybe Tim does want that property. I don't know. I've never talked to Tim about it. I don't know if anyone else wants the property. I'm only saying what you and I have spoke about. I know there was one other gentleman from Ireland that was interested in it, but.
I don't know. I think this, yeah, it's gotta be fair and equitable and, you know, it's, it's important, you know, it's an incubator park. People grow into it and whatnot. And I, and I don't, I wasn't involved with it by any way, shape or form. But I don't know if Tim would even be willing to speak about how he acquired it, what the process was when you acquired it. I don't know if you'd be willing to say it or not. But you're the, you're the most recent purchase, I think, of, you know, of a piece of property.
Exactly what Nick just said. Put a letter of intent in for the property and it went to the board of selectmen. And I didn't attend any meetings, but there was some sort of process that went, they went through to choose myself and Tim Moyer to build on the two lots out of the freight. So.
And Colton, I was part of that too. I was on board.
Golden Ark came after. So, in the beginning, it was myself, Tim Moyer, and Freddie Martin.
There you go.
Freddie Martin was the first one. Golden Ark was going to go in there. They, that ended up with another deal. It was the three of us that were chosen to begin with.
And it worked that great for the town.
So, we, we own the property or Tim?
We own it.
We leased the property. Who was you?
Like the sign guy?
Exactly.
Exactly.
Kind of.
Kind of.
And across, and what's, and across the street is also.
The package they put together when Dick divided it up, he went to a growing small business. With Rob, Tim, and said, hey, I can do this for you, but I want you to have the incentive to go grow your business, put up a building. So, by not strapping cash and buying the land, he said, I can give you a lease to keep you liquid. And you can go to the bank and get a building loan and you can go build your loan or building. And then we'll set on an agreement and when your business is flourishing in thirty years, you can buy back the land for the price that we agreed on. So, what I'm feeling, which is great for Tim, it's great for T, that's fine. But you gotta also understand that I don't, I don't want that. I'll just pay for it. So, I'm expediting that cash thirty years.
I, I wasn't, I wasn't, wasn't a select.
But that was his, that was his mentality, was I can get these little incubators to grow, you know?
No, it's, you know, it's, we're looking, constantly looking for land just to get another incubator space coming.
Been six, seven years and I think, you know, that's, you know, I think we should put it to bed and let it start growing.
Good job.
So, I don't know where we can go from here or what goals we can set. I'll put a letter of intent for a group of funds, but I'll pay the asking price for it. And close of January fifteen days and I, you know, do I ask for a vote or?
No, we're gonna, we've gotta look into all the things that you talked about. We've gotta look into how we're gonna market it. You want it. There, there are other folks that have expressed interest in it. And we're gonna get everyone, everyone that wants it a fair shake.
I'm the first person that came to the board, so let's not forget about that. We're gonna, you know, I'm here. I can go out and fish for a hundred people if they get interested. The reality is that I'm here.
Yeah, well, thank you. You're the first to come in front of the board.
First to come in front of the board.
I'm, I'm not, I don't wanna poke you, but I got, I gotta say like two cents. Yes, I respect, like I said, we had a good conversation. I respect that you came to us. But let's rewind. A couple of months ago, you were coming out as strong about having RFPs for everything else.
Right, but I'm not soliciting to work for the town. I'm just trying.
I'm just, you know, I, I, the world I come from.
And I still haven't seen the RFP process, but I didn't break out.
The world I come from, it's, it's a bidding process where I come from. And that, that's all that.
Like I said, you know, bidding, but like I said, we establish values. They are currently current.
Thanks, Nick.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is executive session regarding contract negotiations with our union. So, we're gonna go into executive session and record. We're gonna have to ask everybody to leave. We'll have our conversation and we'll.
Make sure we go into this.
At what time?
Seven oh five. Sure, there is.
Somebody had to go along there.
Thanks, Jay.
Is there anybody else outside?
I don't know.
Seven oh five, seven.
Of course there isn't. All right, thank you. We were out of executive session at seven oh seven, seven seventeen. Sorry about that. It was longer than I thought. No votes were taken, no decisions were made, and there's no action required now. So, what we will do is transfer motion to adjourn. A second. All those in favor? All right. Thank you.
It's the regular meeting of the Deep River Board of Directors, March twenty thirty-one P M. First item, while we do have visitors and we will have our visitors chat with us first. We should approve the minutes of the February meeting and our two workshops. So, let's take them, look, does anyone have any preference? Does anyone have any issues they'd like to raise in any of it? We can approve all of them simultaneously or we could do.
I mean, I mentioned we accept the minutes from the February twenty, twenty-two meeting and both of the workshop minutes, which we can discuss then.
We have a second. All right. All those, anyone like to? Who's second? Oh, Bill. Okay, yeah. I thought it was a more serious. Okay, anyone wish to discuss anything other than that? A call and votes. And thanks. All those in favor of accepting a minute, please say aye. Aye, aye, aye. Thank you. Is that, let's have our visitors. Everyone knows, well, I say everyone, but it's Mike and Mark. You've been our auditors for two thousand seventeen. All right, well, you have actually been lead partner for two thousand seventeen. You've been beginning. Two.
Oh, this is definitely under you.
Uh, we appreciate that. All right, with that, I cannot prejudice the representation any and thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much again. Mike, the new department at Mahoney Sable. Ultimately responsible for overseeing the audit work, issuing reports on the firm. Again, joining, joining me is Warner Messina. She's a senior manager at the firm. Ultimately responsible for really the day-to-day execution of our, of our office. So, happy to be here to present the results of the town's fiscal year twenty-one audits. In your package, there are three reports. There is the financial statements. There is the state's and law reports, and there's also a governance communication there. So, all of our required reporting and communications are included in each of these reports. So, this evening, what I'll do is provide kind of an overall highlight of the scope of work, the audit reports that were issued. I'll give you some general overall financial highlights, avenues, and questions that we may have. And then we'll just have some, some re- auditor communications that I'll make. So, looking at the presentation, if you can turn to slide two. Again, in terms of the overall scope of work, no change from the scope of work that was performed in prior years. Digital model, the town's financial statements. We perform that audit in accordance with both the auditing standards issued by the A S C A as well as the government auditing standards issued by the Government Accountability Office. In addition, based on the level of state funding that was received and expended, we did also perform a state single audit. Again, the town did not meet the threshold for the federal single audit for fiscal year twenty-one. In addition, we do also perform a group on procedures report on the end-of-school year reports that are required to be filed with the State Department of Education. And again, we do perform those procedures over at the school. In addition, when we go to test services, we also perform some non-audit services. So, we do assist in the preparation of the town's financial statements, the schedule of expenditures of state financial assistance, any related notes. We also assist in converting your government, our governmental fund financial statements to your government-wide financial statements. Essentially, in order for us to be able to perform those services. Ultimately, management is required to oversee those services and accept responsibility for them. Again, financial statements are the responsibility of management. Again, Kathy is the council manager and Bob Grissom as the region for finance director ultimately have a set responsibility for those services. And we issue a number of reports. The main report is the report on the financial statements. We did issue unmodified opinions on your financial statements. And again, an unmodified opinion is expressed when we conclude that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with the accounting principles generally accepted in U S. And that is as established by the governmental accounting standard boards for governments. In addition, I do like to point out that our opinion does provide reasonable assurance. Again, it's not absolute assurance. We don't test every transaction. There are estimates that are included in those financial statements. So, there is the potential for a material misstatement to exist. But again, our opinion does provide a very high level assurance that the financial statements are screwing from material statements. In addition to the report on the financial statements, we do also issue a report on compliance and on internal controls, financial reporting. Again, if, if you read the report, you know, essentially, we do not actually express an opinion on your compliance involving regulations or on the effectiveness of your internal control. Essentially, during the course of performing the audit, if we become aware of a material non-compliance with the law of regulation or of a material weakness in your internal controls, we are required to include it in this report. And again, we did not report any such matters in connection with your drawing. As in connection with the state support, we do issue a report on compliance and on internal control at the state financial assistance level. Again, reading through the report here, we do actually express an opinion on your compliance with your major programs. So, for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, the total state financial assistance that was subject to our testing was about three hundred and thirty thousand. The major programs were the county road grant and the municipal grant eight. Again, we issued unmodified opinions on compliance, meaning respecting the money on allowable costs. And we did not report any deficiencies in your internal control over grant compliance for those programs. Have an item here, just to kind of give an update. So, if the board members in the prior year, we did have a significant deficiency in internal control that we reported. That significant deficiency really surrounded the, the year-end closing process and some year-end reconciliations. I'll call that an audit track for the audit. Again, there was significant improvement in that area in connection with the current year audit. So, we were comfortable with moving that significant deficiency from the, from the report. One of the things you have to discuss with management is to really develop kind of a formal closing timeline and checklist that can be utilized and monitor your closing process. So, again, so hopefully that this would not result in a deficiency next year if you have some kind of defined process to, to review. So, before I move on to the financial highlights, any questions as far as the scope of work or the audit reports that are issued?
Wait, wait, you do not test, you do not send out the word of approval? Confirming, you don't ask people to confirm that, yes, we did pay you this and that, everything you said you do it.
So, nominations, yeah, we typically confirm with financial institutions, we'll confirm with debt. Typically, we do not confirm your taxes, tax receivables. You know, we will test those alternatives using alternative procedures. But yeah, so we do use nominations for.
Is that because, is that your general procedure? You don't test how deep you go in your testing? You seem to identify it as a limited, and I was curious why you didn't sort of phrase that direction.
Is it limited? Uh, no, I think not limited, but you have.
It couldn't be more, you know, just.
Oh, absolutely. Sure, it's versus reasonable. Yes, so we have auditing standards that we follow. In, in those standards, you're required to utilize certain sampling methodologies. So, again, we do perform samplings, we test material amounts, but we're obviously not testing every transaction. So, there is a risk that something we didn't test may be wrong in your financial statements. But yeah, so that's what I was.
I have a question. Last year, we talked about the efficiency internal controls and my memory is a little bit, we talked about setting up a closing procedure. Back and then this year, I just couldn't say that again. Has it, was it done last year? Or was something put in place and we should go further?
So, nothing was put in place. Part of the thing was you were gonna try to assist and help developing those closing procedures.
Never done.
That process never happened. However, we did work with Kathy to help kind of prepare for the audit in a closing step. We've talked with, with Andy's about actually doing a separate engagement where we help develop those, you know, formal procedures. And we're looking to do that in, in April or May of this year.
Very good. And while it's way off subject, you remember when we looked at our proposed budget, there's some incremental dollars in that line of an attempt to begin to do that for next.
All right, so move along to the financial highlights. Again, there's a lot of financial information included in the financial statements. Trying to just kind of give you an overall sense of how the town is doing. In terms of the general fund budgetary highlights, again, your original budget to plan the use of fund balance in the amount of about a hundred and sixty-five thousand. Your final budget did include approximately forty-two thousand in additional appropriations, ultimately resulting in a planned use of fund balance in the amount of two hundred and nine thousand. Your actual change in fund balance was an increase of six hundred and seven thousand. Your revenues were about three hundred and nineteen thousand when they were budgeted and that was really the result of favorable property tax collections, collection of building permits and conveyance taxes. And then overall, your expenditures were about five hundred and thirty-two thousand less than budgeted. Again, it did have budgetary savings across all departments and we did not identify instances of budgetary non-compliance. Next slide goes over your governmental fund financial highlights. So, again, this includes your general fund on a GAAP basis as well as any special revenue or capital project funds. The majority of your financial transactions are recorded in your general fund. The combined ending fund balances as a year-end total approximately three point five million. Again, that was an increase of about five hundred and eighty-five thousand from the prior year. Really, again, driven by the change in your fund balance in the general fund. Of the three point five million, two point eight million is in your general fund, which was an increase of about five hundred and eighty-one thousand from the prior year. The majority of that is considered unassigned and that represents about fifteen point four percent or one twenty months of more budgetary expenditure appropriation. So, certainly we've seen over time since we've started the audit, that fund balance percentage was, was very low. Below what is typically recommended by the G F O A, which puts out that all governments regardless of size should have approximately two months of reserves on hand. So, again, you're right around that, that threshold now. All of your other funds had an end of fund balance of about six hundred and eighty-one thousand. Again, which is about two thousand from the prior year. Do you want to point out, particularly, we'll point out if you do have a fund balance deficit in a special fund. You did have a deficit of about twenty-four hundred dollars in the veterans' fund. Again, that will just need to get funded by either future contributions, donations, or other revenues.
That's, that's the one we took on for the veterans.
Yeah. Yeah, that's. Kind of a.
For that, we're not.
That's right. Yeah, the green. Yeah, yeah. They, they overspent the work that they were doing on the green and they're, they're trying to do some fundraising to replenish that.
So the definition of overs, again, the definition of overfunded, but who picked up that cash? Did the town pick up the cash?
Town did, yeah.
Ultimately, if it's not funded, the town will have to permanently fund it through either transfer out of the dental fund um, or some other.
No, it's part of the LOSE grant, the LOSE has been a specific thing for veterans, green veterans, memorials and things like that. And it's, it's planning to go do what we want to do with that.
So the reason pointed out, again, just know it's there, it's in the financials and again, uh, you know, town monitor to make sure that it's, you know, addressed. Um, next slide goes over your government-wide financial statements, and then the government-wide financial statements are prepared on a full-approval basis of accounting, much like a, uh, a business, so we try to capture all of your capital assets as well as any related debt. Um, the focus on the government-wide financial statements from a few user perspective is really on your long-term liabilities. So it does present, you know, any pension liabilities or other post-employment benefit liabilities that the town has. Uh, overall, the town does have a positive unrestricted net position of about one point four million. Uh, in terms of your net pension liabilities, um, again, you're reporting a net pension liability for your town plan of, uh, just about two million dollars. Um, the funding percentage on that plan went down significantly from about sixty percent to about thirty percent. Um, and that was really attributed to some retirements and payouts of pension plans. Um, so again, that had an impact on the denominator of the funded status. Um, again, your liability is practically utilized in a discount rate of six percent, and that is an appropriate discount rate, uh, to utilize. Uh, your net pension liability for your fire plan was about two hundred and seventy-six thousand. Uh, that plan is currently about seventy percent funded, also utilizing an appropriate discount rate. Um, and then you also record a portion of the, um, net pension liability of the CEMERs plan. Um, none of it relates to, uh, individuals of the school district. Um, and so that liability is, that's been allocated to the town is about a hundred and eight thousand. Um, that plan is currently about seven-one percent funded at state level. Um, and again, the, the school district does make contributions to that plan for those employees.
There's a massive amount of slurs in these.
Yeah.
On that, it's like, there are people that have yet, there are people at school covered by that plan. They're covered by the state. The school districts make contributions to it, but yet because they're elementary, they go on and on.
What's the reason for the difference in the discount rate, uh, similar sources there? The state's been a little bit more aggressive, uh, I think from their perspective, they think that, um, they manage their own investments of, of these funds. So they're projecting a higher return on investments than a lot of other towns. But in general municipalities, we've seen it between probably six and six and a half percent. Now, the state just brought it down, they were previously at eight percent for a very long time. Um, so bringing it down from eight percent to seven percent, I mean, it's a big impact on the able-bodied contributions. Um, but ultimately, uh, they've supported the use of seven percent somehow. Any, any of the information that is included in your financial statements in respect to CEMERs has been audited by, uh, another auditor at the state level. So we just get that information ultimately in terms of your financial statements. Um, the town also reports other post-employment benefit liabilities, and again, that's associated with eligible employees of the Board of Education. Um, again, state law does allow retirees access to the Board of Education's health care plan. Um, the actuary has developed a, a calculation to determine the liability for those benefits that totaled approximately two hundred and eleven thousand at year-end. Again, you don't currently have a trust, you're not funding those benefits. Um, so again, that calculation is, um, may utilize in a very low discount rate. The last section I have here is, again, just our required communications, and these communications are really geared towards when the auditor runs into issues during the course of the audit. So again, we have certain, uh, communications that were required to make. Um, the first item here talks about our responsibility under our auditing standards, although we do assist in the preparation of the financial statements. Again, they are the responsibility of management, that's our responsibility to perform our procedures and express our opinion on the financial statements. Uh, in terms of the plan scope and timing of the audit, again, no changes in the overall scope of work that was performed. Uh, we did require one thirty-day extension, which was approved by OPM. Um, I'd like just to kind of point out, so out of the hundred and sixty-nine municipalities, uh, there were over ninety municipalities that were on extension, uh, this year. And there are still municipalities that are on extension, so, um, although, you know, again, we strive to, to be able to issue the financial statements by year-end. It really depends on the town's ability to close out your records as well as our capacity as auditors to get that work done before the December the first day. Um, so again, every year we try to move that up for you, um, so hopefully, uh, at some point in time we'll be able to, to file by year-end.
You phrase it as if that was a large number at the state, why does the state, uh, just run enough auditors or firms or?
Yeah, I mean, there's a hundred and sixty-nine municipalities that only audits, and they really can only be done between like September and I'll say November. It's tough to start an audit in December, maybe it's the audit done and completed by year-end. Um, so there's just not enough firms to have this, this specialty. Uh, because if government is, is a niche, uh, it's different accounting standards and everything else, so, um, yeah, it's like the passing of the pressure. All right, the last section goes over, uh, significant audit findings. Uh, again, if you want to point out, if you go through the financial statements, you will see that the town did implement new accounting standard this year. Um, GAAP statement number each form for usual activities did not have a material effect on your financial statements, uh, but it did result in an increase in your net position in the amount of eighteen thousand. Um, and that was just the re-characterization of agency funds to governmental funds based on the administrative involvement of, of the town. In terms of significant estimates and judgments, again, uh, there are some significant estimates in the financial statements. Uh, primarily consistent with your estimated useful lives that are assigned to capital assets, uh, discount rates that were utilized in determining your net pension no debt liabilities. Um, and then the town does also carry a landfill closure and foreclosure care liability. Um, again, we did review those estimates and we didn't deem them to be reasonable and consistent with, uh, methodology used by other municipalities. Um, having before, we had no significant physical reasons encountered performing the audit. Uh, we had no uncorrected misstatements, uh, so again, if we identified adjustment during the course of our audit work, we posed it to management and said, no, we don't want to report that. We are required to communicate that to you, so we had no uncorrected statements. Um, had no disagreements with management. Uh, we did obtain a representation letter, again, nothing unusual, uh, was included in that representation letter. Um, I just give you the example, if, if you're unable to substantiate a transaction and we relied on representations from Angus, we would communicate that to you, uh, but that would be, you need representation. Uh, again, not aware of any consultations by the town with any other accounting accounts. If you were, we'd have to make a communication. So that concludes the overall audit presentation, uh, again, happy to answer any questions that you may have about the financial statements, uh, if you need the audit work.
Hey, thank you. We're gonna work again next year?
I hope so.
Good. Send us a report or a contact or something.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you. Lots of numbers, lots of numbers, and they say lots of numbers. We, this is useless. We deal on a month-to-month basis with the budget. And most of us are pretty familiar with what's in the budget. And when we talk about surplus, we talk about here's how much money we budgeted for revenues or money for expenses, and that's what we say is the surplus. But you bring in GAAP accounting, which, and you and I just chatted a moment ago, so there's, we're serious about that. We could go from our budget work to GAAP accounting. If we have a lender, if we are going out for a borrow, what has been your experience, what does a lender look at?
It's probably your, 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 your financial position, uh, in terms of your unassigned fund balance. Um, no different than the radio, when they raise the house, you know, they're looking for your.
It always, I think it'll be getting.
Yeah, they look at other things, especially with governments, so you're, you know, how your, uh, tax base and brand list, you know, there's a lot of other things that they probably are doing this year before they, they let you. Yeah, certainly unassigned fund balance, your budgeting. Your over-expending budget.
We've gotten past the closing that's over here, that, that, we are doing this, but now it's, okay.
I'm not sure if it would be appropriate, but if, if it is, I'd love for everybody to hear. Um, we had a brief conversation the other day about, um, our police, the way we budget for our police, the revenues and expenditures, and, you know, we put kind of, I don't want to call them placeholders, but that really is what they are, numbers in there, in both, both ends, that revenues and expenditures. And you mentioned another way to do that would be to take that outside and establish their own fund. And I, I've been thinking about that, and I, I like the idea of that in one sense, maybe you can just enlighten us all. But if we were to do that, that fund could be used for capital expenditures, I mean, with, for items in the police department, like a, a cruiser. Because I know we're gonna need a cruiser in a couple of years, and I think in a couple of years, that fund would grow to that.
Right.
What's?
Yeah, so the statutes permit, uh, any municipality to establish, uh, other funds that are non-lasting in the future. Uh, so, you know, again, you'll see that there's the, um, the, the Board of Education Nonlasting Fund in the statutes. There's capital non-recurring, there's park and recreation, um, you can really do that with, with anything. So some towns that we've seen, they've established ones for the police private duty. Um, so effectively they establish an ordinance, um, or a separate fund where you would record all the revenue transactions. And then you would also identify what the expenditures you would, you know, allow, uh, to be recorded in that fund. Um, you can put caps on it, you can transfer money back into the general fund. Um, so it, it does give you some flexibility, you just have to spend the time to actually, you know, establish the ordinance and the parameters.
And that would be something that would be done by ordinance, not by the Board of Finance?
Yeah, I think we, I think under the statutes, you want to be worked by ordinance.
Good, okay, thanks.
A lot of these other funds have already been established in the statutes, so you don't necessarily need an ordinance for that. Um, but here, this, I don't, there's not one, there's not a statute that already commits you to do that, except a statute that considers wanting to establish them.
We'd like the town with me for this. Thanks.
So I can say, I can give you a, a probably whole example of an ordinance.
That'll be great. Yeah, we'll talk further, we're gonna be getting together next month anyway, so.
Yeah, because it is difficult from a budget perspective to. Manage this.
It is more difficult to manage this?
In, in the general fund, the way it is.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, okay, good, thanks.
Is it all just police, which is what we talked about? We also have park and rec, which has self-funding programs, which cause, when you get to that park and rec, it gets difficult to figure out what we're spending in that also. Same, is it all self-funding programs that go into the separate funds?
Yeah, so under the statutes, you already have the ability to, the Board of Finance can, I think, recommend that the park and recreation fund, and you can track that activity on the separate one. The fund balance relates to those activities and maintain, you know, stay in that fund. Um, and then, you know, you could budget in, if you needed to subsidize it, you could budget in a subsidy from the general fund each year as opposed to the revenues and expenditure of the park and rec. So again, that's already permitted under statute, so the police private duty is something that you would have to kind of take an additional step to establish.
And just to follow up.
But there's, there's nothing wrong with doing it in the general fund, so.
No, not even saying that there's anything wrong with it, I just kind of like the idea of, of separated, separating it a little bit so that it's easy to see, easy to find, and, and easy to manage. But, um, just to follow up a little bit on the parks and recreation, we can supplement that fund if we desire, or if, if they need it. Um, if there's something coming up, but also on the other end of that, if at the end of the year there was surplus that could come, we could push that right back into the general fund. So it can feed, feed each other, similar to how they, how they do it, it's just, I, I believe, better, I don't want to say accountability, but easily, easily found, easily tracked, I would think.
Yeah, it's, it's more transparent.
Easily managed, yeah, yeah, okay, thanks.
I asked you last year about the pension fund, are, are you concerned, or should we be concerned, or do they want thirty-one percent funded? Or as it is? So I think that's probably especially for the, for the actuary. Um, I mean, obviously it's a low percentage, but it, it did have a significant amount of benefit payments that were made. Um, so the actuary should be taking that into consideration, you know, as long as you're making your annual required contributions, um, and they're estimating the payments out, um, you know, that is, that percentage should be able to go up quickly. They're scary.
No, they, they are scary, and, um, you will see in this year's proposed budget, there's a significant increase in our contributions in order to get that back up there based on actuaries', um, recommendations. We were very, very happy to get that back up to where it should have been.
Yeah.
And then went, I got it, um, so we'll work hard to get it back up there.
All right, any other questions?
I, I, I think that, that, uh, I'm reading or seeing this budget that, you know, clues go to Bud and Angus and Kathy, that they've done a good job.
Thanks.
Mention that in heaven.
You know, we're builders, oh, this is our, we're, Bill was talking about that to me, right?
Well, I'm using this.
You've got to be his brother. Just because it's warming up.
Don't learn to explain.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I think everyone else has one. Not after competing, isn't it? You've been there, done that.
Yeah.
Wore the T-shirt, wore the T-shirt out.
Yeah, it's got the X here, X here. There you go, there's one over.
Yeah.
Twenty-five years old.
Ten years.
Russ is now one of the old retired guys. He joined the group, I don't know if you know, five days ago or something, he retired, you know, four days ago, three days, two weeks ago. I should have done that a lot of time ago.
They're eating dinner at four three. I'll move now, because I can tell I'm not wanted anymore.
Just gonna say, get out of that world, but.
Oh, God.
They don't want me to be a select.
How was your, your agenda?
Okay, um, I think everyone received the report, I know Kathy, I had Kathy send it out to everyone too. Uh, let's just take a look at our general fund account balances. Let's see, from last month, from February twenty-second, uh, to, uh, yesterday, March twenty-first, uh, we, our, our balances went down a little over a million dollars. We, our balances went down a little over a million dollars, a billion eleven thousand dollars. And I did make two transfers during, during the month. One on February 28th for seven hundred thousand, one on March 7th for four hundred thousand, so a million one in transfers. And that went from the Liberty Bank Municipal Sweet Money Market Account to our Citizens, Citizens Bank General Fund. If you look at the total balances at the bottom of the page, you look from yesterday to a month prior. We're minus a million twenty-nine thousand six hundred eighty-three dollars. However, if you take three twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, and compare it to three twenty-two, two thousand twenty-one. We're up a million three eighty-one, three, three eighty-one, three eighty-one, ninety-three cents. If, and, but if you minus out our ARP funds, the American Rescue Plan Act, so we have six hundred and fifty-seven thousand plus in that account. I guess they take away that, we're still up by seven hundred and twenty-three thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars. Speaking of the American Rescue Plan account, we were able, when we first opened the account back in July, July of 26th. We thought we could get interest on the account. And then we, we took, actually, we, we made that as a non-interest-bearing account, which covered a couple of months, and then we found out definitely we could have an interest account. So if we, if we tally up all the interest from when we first opened that account, we've gotten two hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-six cents in interest. So the average is about, about forty, forty, between forty and forty-six dollars a month. Couple of things, rate increase, believe it or not, with Liberty Bank, we actually went up from five basis points from zero point one five to zero point two oh, I think, due to prime rate increase. They actually did up our rates without even telling me, so that was, that was pretty good. And regarding our education equalization grant monies, ECS monies. We, we get those three times a year. October 29th, we get a quarter, a quarter of that total. And January 29th, we get another, we got another quarter. And, but April 30th, we're looking to get half of that, that amount, so we should be getting eight hundred and thirty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars. On April, April 30th, which will be the last payment for the, just, just a year. So having said that, I think we're in good shape.
I have a question, and this could be for you, Tom, or it could be for Andy, so hands on budgets. We just heard that the veterans free was over, over spent. Thirty-two hundred dollars in the fund.
That's why I was surprised to see that in the audit account. I knew that the, there was a cost overrun in the work that was done on the green with the patio there.
I agree.
Yeah, but there was, there was funds in those to cover that, so I wasn't concerned about it. By the end of the year, that'll be even steaming.
And I think they're expecting.
There is money in the accounts, but I don't.
They're expecting, they're actually expecting some donations.
Yes, they were.
Yes, so, yeah, I.
It doesn't make sense, that's why.
Yeah, I don't get it. It surprised me, I didn't, you know.
I mean, I could touch base with, I think it's Dick.
With Rich.
Rich Nagin.
Yeah.
Rich Nagin, if you want me to just touch base with that.
Yeah, that'd be good, and let's take a look and see what.
Tell them what happened with the audit, and then you still have, you know, thirty-two hundred dollars in that account, so what the heck is going on?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll try to get a hold of him. He calls me, so I'd rather call him.
Yeah, it could be an account that has a minimum balance requirement or something. I don't really know, but Tom would know that.
That's, that's a non-interest-bearing account, so, no, yeah, that's, that's not an issue there at all.
No, that is. Thanks for pointing it out. It is something that I wanted to explore, because I don't.
We want to take care of our veterans, or our members take care of us, so we'll work, work it out, figure out what's.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I don't, there's no concern. There's, there's a major expense coming up still to finish that patio, and it was much higher cost than anybody anticipated. So there were supposed to be a couple of fundraisers over the course of the past year, but our pandemic extended a little beyond, and I'm sure that you'll see some activity coming through that. Now, they do a great job over there.
Yeah. I know Dick used to call me, and he'd say, oh, was that to get another deposit into that account, and we were supposed to be getting a, you know, a donation coming in. So I was kind of monitoring that for a while, and we did, and they did get a donation. So like five hundred dollars, I forget what it was, but I'll call him.
Great, thanks. Let me know how that turns out.
Yeah, sure.
Thanks.
Just to jump, how we just during the van, like, the audit was of June 30th. You're looking at current, now, did you see this going negative during?
No, oh, that could be, that could be the answer right there, and it's so simple, I couldn't even see it. That audit was last year, when the work was done. This budget, this is probably just built itself back up again, because that audit ended, June 30th, this ended two days ago. Yes, yes. Sorry about that. I didn't even see that answer yet. No, I don't think there's a need to call. They, they got, they raised money.
Thanks.
While we're on John Michik, if you look at right under ARP, you'll see Capital Non-Reoccurring Fund, which I consistently call that John Bauer Fund. We've got three hundred nineteen thousand dollars plenty we put away back when John was with us, which was quite a while ago, to pay for capital. So as we talk about capital, I offer that money as available to us, or should be available, just before. And I am on the word, look at their checking account.
Yeah.
They are building up a surplus down there, other than they're jolting up, but nothing more to add.
I believe that that building up that surplus is very similar to, to the town. It's an interest to, you know, to have available funds if needed.
I'm down about that.
And I think, I think if we remember correctly, but you and I were on the board at the same time, then before it became Selectman, that surplus had been depleted through loans to the community and things like that. I think, and, and I think the sewer project might have cost them. Yes.
Several years back.
Yeah, yeah.
Why is it in a checking account versus? And it's interest, I mean, there's a lot of money there. Should it be in an interest-bearing account or something, which I can. Yeah.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out. It just seems like a lot of money for a checking account. It's no difference or whatever.
Well, it's something we can talk to.
You know, and again, I think it's because of the ups and downs of that, that account. And now, yeah, now there is a substantial amount in there. I can touch base with Pete Lewis, and just to see what, what's happening, what's happening there.
Apparently, while some of this could be cash flow, but there is a substantial.
Yeah. Yeah, I can touch base with that.
It might be able to be used and multiplied somehow.
Yeah, having said that, interest rates are. Yeah, the interest rates are pretty low still, but who knows? We could see a change maybe in, in rates.
That brings us to selecting recommendations, especially Angus, who is through what is happening in the last audit, or would be what happens if the next time.
We had a conversation at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, and while we're not looking for any action now, I do want to bring back to the forefront of everyone's thinking. The fact that we do in fact need to, to address the need for a tanker up at the fire, up at the Windsor Fire Department. And, and a plow, a new plow truck for, or dump truck for the town public's works. The tanker, first we'll take that on, Tim was kind enough to meet us up there, and Bud and I, and Dwayne and Jim actually came in at different times to, to review. The existing tanker and to learn a little bit more about it. And it turns out, I actually thought it was 12 years, but the town has owned that truck for 14 years. But we bought it used from Durham.
Who had retired it?
They retired it.
They have retired it. It's a 33-year-old vehicle. And there are parts on that that are important. There's actually a pump on that that, that doesn't work anymore. It doesn't mean that the, that the truck doesn't work, it's just a, a working part of that truck, that the replacement of it would be, again, putting good money after bad. The Fire Department has raised a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to go towards that purchase. Which, you know, depending how you break it out, you could say it's a third of the purchase of the truck, or you could say it's close to the cost of the chassis. There are different ways to, to, to define it. As far as I'm concerned, it's, you can define it as a gesture of, of number one, to show that they're need. And to show their effort to try to take some of that load off of the, off of the community. So I, I think it's something we need to talk about. The reason we need to talk about it a little bit now, as opposed to wading through the budget process, is simply, the costs of these things is, is going up so quickly. And the length of time to get them is expanding to where, when we, if we order that truck tomorrow, it's a year and a half out. And the same thing with the plow truck. It, to me, we're in a situation where we need trucks, the plow in particular, at least in my experience. We need to get that, we're going to go through another winter with a truck that we need to replace. So I, I want you all to start thinking about it. We can start talking about how we're going to do it, whether we should make that, if we made that order, we could place that order now. And we don't, still don't have to worry about funding it for, you know, probably six, eight months. But we need to, we need to have that all in place. And I don't, I probably didn't say that correctly, but we have to worry about how we're going to fund it, but we don't have to actually raise the money, have the money available. So we could order them now, and it would still be a part of next year's budget, not anything that we would have to do for right now. But I do think we need to, to think about it, to talk about it, and maybe make, put it at the front of our conversation when we talk to the Fire Department. Next week at the Budget Workshop.
Do you want to give an estimate if you order it tomorrow?
We would have to get another estimate on both trucks. The, the truck, the most recent estimate that we had was on the plow truck, and that, that has expired. So we would need to get another estimate, and we, we would need to have a commitment, and I don't think that, as. Backwards as it sounds, I don't think we could get a proposal for a vehicle now that would last them the amount of time that we need to go through Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, Town Meeting. Because they're, they're, the truck proposal was, was, I think for 10 days, it was good for us. So. So. Not until we're ready to go. But it is. You know, we can use that estimate as basis, maybe set the town money as, you know, and not to exceed fee or something like that, but.
Question in my mind. It's a lot of demands on the budget right now, especially from the fire truck. And pumper, which indeed. Are there any, is there any way to use some, or all ARPA funds for any of this?
There is, and, but we have to look at the, the amount of money that we have and the amount of money that's being demanded, or the pressure that's being put on us and that. We don't have enough in our ARPA funds to cover all of it. You know, and we need to make a decision as a community as to how much percentage do we want to put towards that. Some communities are putting it all into their capital. I don't think that's appropriate. That was not the intent of the money. Although the federal government did in fact back off and say, if, you know, that you can. But I do think that.
I don't think, I don't think it's hard either, but it would be nice to have some help.
We certainly can.
Fire Department's taking in a third of their.
Yep.
This six fifty-seven, that's only half. We're going to be getting another.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, it's quite a.
That's right.
There'll be another chunk coming in.
I think along with.
When does that money have to be spent? Someone said.
Four years.
Yep.
We've got.
You can get half a plow truck, and some of the tractor truck, it would help to use the first.
Yep.
This, this, my, my two cents, the Budget Workshop, I was, I was being the, you know, putting the different hats on, firing every time, and all that kind of stuff. And I, I looked at the truck yesterday, and I did not realize that it was a retired truck from one of our neighboring towns. So there's, there's a reason why vehicles are retired. It is, it is all, it is, it's based on a commercial chassis, which commercial chassis aren't fire truck chassis. You know, it's, it's in no way, shape, or form is an unsafe vehicle, it's a very safe vehicle, but it's, it's built on a commercial chassis, we can go to a big Ford truck dealer where they're buying. It's, it, it's getting tired. And, and I have, I've kind of switched my, my opinion of the truck, because I, I see it, and people see it around town, but this is the first time yesterday, I really got to go and check it out and see. See what's going on with it. And like I said, I didn't realize it was a retired truck.
That truck was bought when I was a Selectman with Rick and Smitty.
Yep.
And Pete Woodcock was the.
Was the chief.
Chief, so it's a few square feet.
Yeah.
Now, and it became available. So hard, but you got the funds available, and you said it was 14 years ago. I remember it happening. It was an old truck.
And it's getting, it's getting long in the tooth, it's not bad about it. And I'm, I've changed my, I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't, I don't think I, if I came across negative about it, I, I didn't mean to, I just wanted to be, you know, even feel the, express both sides of it, but having seen it and heard what it. What it's been through and inspired us is, and ours, and I, I think that it needs to be, it needs to be, it needs to be replaced.
Certainly, the, the long lead time. Does require, which I did what I expected. The hurry to deposit it forward before the.
Yeah, that's.
We shall discuss, we have time, if you were tolerant, Selectman, if we have time, we'll be meeting every, we meet every Tuesday, Fire Department's coming in, and it's necessary to accelerate it.
Yeah, I, that's, that's the whole purpose of this, is get it back in the front of everybody's thinking. It's not an emergency, but it feels like it sometimes.
Well, it used to be that things came in pretty quick.
Yeah.
You know, a commercial chassis, they might have it, that the Ford dealership up by Brainerd Airport, they might have commercial chassis and stop. That's not the case anymore.
Right, and use, 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 the used market is, is gone.
So the way it used to be is no longer. And you have to wait eighteen, almost eighteen months for the chassis, that's unbelievable. But there doesn't seem to be any, any letup in that either. You know, I can see on the news that they're saying the computer chip, we might be chasing this computer chip thing down for five, five to 10 years. You know, so. It's, yeah, it's unfortunate.
I'll say the same comment I said last night, you know, I support the Fire Department. I'm not picking on past administrations, but the cameras kicked down the road, kicked down the road, kicked down the road, now that we're going to get three trucks within a year and a half, two years. And we have a lot of townspeople that are hurt, you know, and this is putting more financial burden on them. I know they need it, it's a 33-year-old truck, I, I support that, but. We're spending a lot of money on, on that thing in a year and a half. Now they're looking for three trucks. That's my concern. That we have other people that need the money, other avenues in the town need also. So I'm not saying I'm against it, but that's my concern.
And that might be, again, where Russ was going, maybe a, a portion of the ARP funds, not funded a hundred percent, but a portion of it. And I, and I didn't realize that the, the Fire Department had fundraised to the point where they have a hundred and twenty-five thousand, maybe a little more, whatever. You know, I know they do stuff, they have their bank, they have, used to have pancake breakfast and light sale and all that kind of stuff, so what their fund is, I didn't know, and they're willing to step upwards, which is, which is good.
They're doing the right thing. We also, yes, I support the Fire Department too personally, and I think as a town. They have no choice but to do it because they provide such an important function.
And I, and I did say to them last, or them yesterday, I think it's still really important, that the, the results of that survey. You know, when that comes in, that will help, that'll help all of us here, you know, have a better understanding as to what an independent third party says, we, we have too much of stuff, we don't have enough stuff. We should have this instead of that, you know, it'll help all of us make a, make a difference.
Is that that lean survey you're talking about?
Is that that lean survey you're talking about?
It almost seems like there's a lot of stuff getting requested in advance of, of that. Which is good. But like the one said, a lot of that stuff.
There are big requests.
Kick down the road because of various COVID and.
No, it would be nice to have that.
Absolutely, yeah.
Ideally, hand before.
We don't know whether we're gonna get this.
That's the problem.
Right?
Yeah, no, we don't, that's, you know, they're making good progress in compiling the information they need. I think they're probably, I think they're probably two-thirds of the way through that. And once they compile that information, it shouldn't be that long for them to be able to do a C report, but I expect it's a few months down the road anyway.
That will be absolutely right.
Yeah.
All right, I guess you've looked into the future, it's taken us with you. Can you share what has happened over the last week or so, the town has approved stuff?
Yeah, the town, we, you know, we, we are in the process of putting together a purchase order for the cameras and the server for the police department. We have, the town meeting the other night approved the monies that we all forwarded for the pension fund.
That was approved.
That was approved. And it was one, two weeks ago, what was that that we spent on?
Solar thing?
The solar, yeah. And that solar panel is, is, that will come in to affect us in our budgeting, probably in two years, because they've gotta go through the process of mapping, surveying, laying out where they're gonna put, what they're gonna put, and getting the local and state approvals that they need. So it'll probably be eighteen months or two years before we start seeing the revenue from that. Once we do see that revenue, it'll be forty-three thousand and one dollar every year for twenty years.
An annual contribution or monthly?
It's actually monthly, we tried hard to negotiate that to annual, but they, they insisted on monthly.
They insist upon sending us money monthly?
Me too. And that's what I really wanted, it's just so much easier, and it's just better, but.
All right, good. Would you like, unless you're, are you finished with what has been done?
I think so, I don't think we need to talk about the schools right now, although I think all of their workshops are finished, I think they're about ready to put together their, their budgets, and, and for us, I think we've talked about that during our workshops, it looks as if region four is gonna come in as negative number. The elementary school is a positive, but it is very, it's completely, well, I can't say completely, but it's, it's driven by contracted salaries and insurance. You know, I think, I think they're going up one hundred and eleven thousand and one hundred and two or one hundred and three of that is, is all, is all salary, so. So, if, if you put all three, region four, the elementary school and the supervision together, we end up with a, a negative, less than one percent, but it is a negative number.
Is that negative number from region four to be underdeveloped so that we don't get?
No, that's an interesting, it's really funny, because at the very first workshop, I asked that question. Bud asked that question, we met the other day, and they, they were very quick to respond that, no, that negative number is driven, as we've spoken, by the debt relief that they get, because they paid off a good portion of the bond, we'll see a more increase in that next year. But, so I anticipate that that's going to stay, because they're going to bond for more capital work up there within a year or two, so.
I saw that there are any special meaning to sell off these properties, so that property goes back onto the tax rules?
Yes, that is not, it's important to recognize, that is not the, the
Mislick.
Mislick property that was purchased is another property that they've owned, really since Falls Landing, I think it was the nineties when Falls Landing subdivision, it, it separated the, the piece of property. I, I think they're, they're very close to that, in fact.
There's a sign out there, associate pending.
Yeah, I'm working with Brian to make sure that we all get that public, public, because there is going to have to be a town meeting in order for the towns, the town to vote. Actually, all three towns, I think, but we have to have a town meeting to vote to allow them to sell that. The region owns it, but some, some statute says the town has to have that vote, so.
Shouldn't they have done it before they put it on the market?
No.
No?
No.
There was an email circulating that they were asking registrars of voters to come to a meeting before the vote, so, yes.
Yeah.
So the mystery for me is, maybe you know what Angus thinks, because I'll bring a lot of trouble, where's the proceeds go?
That's a great question.
I didn't get the answer, and Angus was much more gentle.
We don't, we don't have a real answer to that, it goes, they, they do not have to distribute it to the, to the communities, it will not go to Deep River, solely it will go to all three towns, as it was part of the region, so it'll be distributed as part of their surplus.
But it will go on.
It'll just, it'll just go right back into their general fund or their surplus fund that will get distributed as all the other stuff. It's a great question. And as Bud said.
But unlike the other two towns, we get the provincial taxes.
We will get the taxes.
But it goes on the tax or whatever, you suppose.
I was gonna say, that's where that sign.
How much, how much land is there?
Nine acres.
It's nine acres, yeah, it's, it's, there's potential, there's potential for four lots, I think.
Yeah, the road going to the door. For them, do that.
It's right across from the orchard.
When you go down that road, it's a long way down before you know it's starting to get, on the left outside.
They didn't buy a house, does that's where this? I, I can answer that question. This, this purchase was, they, they bought that property when they bought this, the property for Valley Regional High School. That was, that, they've owned that, they've had for a long time. When Falls Landing was constructed, that road separated it from the rest of the school. And they just sat on it for all these years. I started telling them to sell it about four years ago. It's just sitting there.
And they never had an offer on that to develop it?
Not until they put it for sale.
Well, nobody said, hey, you have land, can we buy it?
Just all of a sudden came up, yeah. I don't think anybody really.
I don't think a lot of people knew about it, yeah.
I should look up the water homes.
I would guess, you know, I don't know for sure, there's, there's acreage for, for four lots. My, my guess is that they'll get two, they might be able to squeeze three, but I don't, I don't expect that.
There's something to order.
Right, right.
All right, should we at least conversationally bring others' update with your friends that are helping us at the transfer station?
Their friends that are helping us?
Angus was gonna be friends.
Yes, no, we should. We are, Russ and Bud and Dwayne and I and Nor Drunko are working with a, with a group called Waste Zero, who are working with towns across the country. But working with Connecticut right now, they're, they're partnered with the EEP. We're applying for a grant that will help us implement a program at, at zero cost to the town or the town's people. That changes how we, changes how we go our garbage. Really, it's, it's an effort not to raise money, but to lower costs. And the way, the only way to lower costs at the, at the transfer station is to reduce the amount of waste that goes in there, and most of what creates the cost is household waste and food scraps. So the program, I don't understand it completely right now, and if you guys did, if I say anything incorrect, please correct us, but we will have a lot of town meetings to determine whether we wanna implement this or not. But the idea is that certain colored biodegradable bags will be distributed to folks at a cost, the first year at no cost, but eventually at a cost, and the idea is that once you understand that you're paying so much per bag, whether that's three or four dollars or forty cents, whatever that cost is, that will trigger you to think, well, I don't wanna throw away four bags of trash this, this, every week. I'll throw away two bags of trash, and I'll put a bucket and keep my food scraps, I'll put either going to the compost or bring it to the, to the transfer station, put that in a separate pot. It does, it does two things, it reduces the amount of waste that, that you're, you're generating, or, or how you distribute it once you generate it. And it, by reducing the amount of weight that goes into the, into the compactor, it reduces what the town has to pay for our tipping fees. We will have people who are much more articulate in this to explain it to, to the townspeople. But it's a good program for, for our town, and it's a good program for our state, and basically a good program for, for everybody. It's just, it's traumatic to think about changing how we get rid of our garbage.
Reiterate ourselves.
To rethink how we, how we just get rid of our garbage and our waste. And I think it's a good program, it's gonna come at no cost to us for the first year, and at the end of the year, we decide if we wanna do it or not. So we're, we're applying for that grant, if that's due in the next month, we're gonna have another meeting next, next week. We just gave her the last little bit of information that she needs to help us put together our, our after, our grant application. And I think, I, I, I'm gonna encourage us to go this way, we'll see how we, how it works out.
Probably won't get caught up in the budget, will it?
No, not this year's, none of this will happen in this year's budget. Because there is no cost. What we might see in, in, in our expenses is if we do implement this, we should see a reduction in our tipping fees. So our, what's going to be fun to watch about that, though, is our tipping fees are going up. I think, I think we're going to end up at a hundred and eleven dollars a ton this year. But if we are able to reduce the amount of weight that goes in there, then we can kinda level that off a little bit. Not a lot, if we, if we include the food scraps, we will, we will definitely see some, if, and we do a good job with the food scraps, we will definitely see a more of a savings.
We need to implement this new program, but didn't we talk about more personnel?
Oh, yes, that's, that's the part of it that we've been talking about in the workshops. We, we actually have, in our proposed budget, have budgeted for two and a half people up there.
I wasn't here last night.
Yeah, I know you missed that, yeah, yeah.
Oh, you must have put it.
Yeah, so, yeah, it would be one, one additional person up there, and that, and that'll make a big difference, because it will, that will help us reduce the stuff that goes in there too, because it helps control who's, who's dumping. We're also, you'll see in our budget to finish the road that wraps around, so we can really get that laid out a little bit better as to how. Our proposed.
As far as I can remember, that's all the things that.
That's all you and I spoke about, yeah, and that's all I could think of, yeah.
All right, it is time to glance at our financials through. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, you did. And you did not get them in the most primary fashion. I sent them to you, Angus sent them to me on Monday, I sent you your Monday one.
Kathy sent them out again.
Second version that went out on Monday. Which one?
Kathy's, yes. Is it Kathy sending them?
All right, we'll make sure we.
I suggested, if we're going to talk about, who used ones I sent, I have one from Kathy, she made some.
She made some adjustments that we'll probably talk about, because they were important adjustments. We, Russ sent her your email, I've given her your email, so we'll make sure that it gets in there. But, let me, let me make a copy for you, so you know where the, oh wait, you got the one that Bud sent, all right, okay.
I don't have it, because I can't.
Went out at like six o'clock last night, and. He is very awesome, but she does not know the more.
No, she's, she's been informed.
If you are appreciative habits, send us addresses to this area, I'm looking at, I do not see chassis boxes. Good, okay, and since I spent time with it, well, I love it. Yeah, and does anyone have a particular report they would like to look at? We've started right, there's, we must add that.
Yes.
And then we go to revenues, I believe, if you look at tax collection, it's coming in for now. It has one point two four percent left, one hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars of current tax revenue. Going to get most of it. Property taxes in arrears, while it's a ninety-three, ninety-four thousand, we are not watching you. I boldly am doing the old ones, we're not getting. Actually, if we're lucky, we're gonna. Motor vehicle supplements are up, not super surprising, with everyone buying a car. So, unless anyone wishes to go down the line, look at building permits, we budgeted fifty, it's up to eighty-three. Advanced tax, we budgeted forty, it's up to fifty-six, people are putting, are making changes to their houses. And buying houses in one year, that is good news. A question needs to be thought about as we go into the budget, is that going to continue, do we wish to continue to reflect those kinds of revenues? That's it. And it's probably for you, I have to look for education, money, etc. I, oh. We will, we should deal with it in the, the budget workshop, we're done. Region four, when they were in here the other day, we asked them where the hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars is, turns out they don't resent it, so. Deal with that more in the budget workshop.
Lot off the truck, you're gonna be back?
Well, let's see, who knew, did I know? We'll deal with the budget and what, there's some fairly substantial changes that may be knocked out of this. So, if, and, and here's, let me do a summary, and I have no idea what the real summary. We budgeted to receive, if you take the fire department budget, we assume we would receive about eighteen million six of revenues. We have received right now about a little bit more than seventeen. It's time each time we still have money coming in, the state of about nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Which explains half of what we haven't yet received, about fourteen hundred. There's still some uncertainty with about three or four hundred thousand dollars, but I wish to, while I ended that one in aid, if I still complete their revenues, we'll come in. Unless anyone else.
The revenue also includes several hundred thousand.
Well, you caught, didn't catch my earlier, that revenue of nineteen-two, I have removed that seven hundred. Just like, we still have to, and we should deal with that in the workshop, we still have to deal with and we wish to proceed with a financing this year. We learned when we were chatting about other trucks the other night, with this terminal chassis has arrived, right? Which means that you will have approximately three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar payments.
It's gonna come close to a half a million, because the chassis has arrived, and that's three seventy-five, and there's another hundred
Fifty.
Something that goes into, maybe there's a hundred fifty that goes into painting and things like that.
Which is coming soon, we're gonna have about eighty million dollars, so I, I do believe we have adequate resources now to meet that payment, but we have talked about financing that vehicle, which I think makes sense. We'll talk in the workshop, we'll have more flexibility in the workshop, but all indications would suggest interest rates are going up, and if we wish to take advantage of some of the lower rates, now might be the time. And we talked about doing it in this year.
They'd like to see it.
We're talking about visual. So I think revenues are okay.
Hey Bud, I don't know if anybody'd like to see it, but they posted pictures of the chassis online.
Yeah, we're going to.
Yeah, if you guys wanna see it, I mean, there's pictures of it, of the chassis that's come, so.
Is it white?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, it's already painted?
Yeah, the chassis is done, yeah, that's, yeah.
Guess we got a fan on it.
I thought maybe you just, you could, some visuals to what we're gonna send the check for, or like.
Let's turn to expenditures. You guys, anyone mad? I think we're doing fine. This, this looks like our fire, this is not, this is uh, could be London or Groton or something like that, right?
Well, that white truck, that's ours.
That's ours?
Yeah, the white truck, yeah.
Was it here?
No, it's not here. It's, it's, it's in the state of Connecticut at the, at the fire truck builder.
Oh, wait a minute, I see. It's the front. It hasn't got the back.
Right. That's, it's the cab and the, and the frame of the truck that the fire, fire truck apparatus has been built onto. They got that chassis from a company called Spartan, which is one of the better Spartan chassis. It's a local Connecticut.
All right, again, let's look at expenditures. Okay, let's have because everyone is looking forward to a good time. Let's look at expenditures by department. Then let's, what's in, what is remaining now? Um and we'll say there could be surplus there or not. Um it is the what?
Looking at seventy five percent spent.
We're about seventy five percent spent, um twenty five percent unspent. So if you look at selection's budget, uh certainly much of it is salary. That is going, I suspect you may find a couple thousand dollars, not a lot there. So I'm going to suspect that three dollars left out of selection. Elections, a little bit left, but they have, we have a referendum.
At least one referendum.
At least one referendum and they're going to move it up there. So you may find a small amount there, not much. Town law operations, that is pretty tight, I would say.
Or you can just look to fuel.
Yeah, that's fair. Do you have more fuel to buy, do you think, in this time of?
Well, it's uh, we, we're, you know, that includes diesel and gasoline for our vehicles, but uh I think the big driver is the oil and the gas that we're heating our, our buildings with and hopefully we don't.
Town building repairs, we've got twenty three thousand dollars left. There's always some building that needs uh, needs repair. On hitting that you're not going to see anything left.
No, that's going to be, that's going to be a factor, yeah.
County clerk, I think she has broken even much of that as our or finance, uh we will break even. Maybe there's a few things that can be addressed, but we don't have much left. We should use that uh pretty expense to publish the annual meeting. So I wouldn't expect a lot out of us. Uh assessor, maybe a little left there, but not much. They have not had, they haven't noticed any money on audits this year, present fifteen hundred. Evaluation appeals is.
Just beginning. It's just beginning.
We should have a few dollars left there, but nothing much. I'm not seeing any big dollars. Tax collector will probably leave us some money for the uh, a part-time salary. I wouldn't be surprised that seven all the way to. Um special services um.
That always gets spent down early because a lot of that is contractual and one-time payments.
Good, good, okay. Um got a little contingency left. Um right, and some of that, that Memorial Day beautification, that is yet to go. Um planning zoning, uh surprised that they have not spent more than a little year or two. Should be, maybe some dollars left, here are opinions in there. Um building official, he's going to spend all his money, mostly in salaries. Maybe his books.
Yeah.
Um in the wetlands, always give us a few dollars back. Insurance and bonds, there is about four thousand dollars left there, where that's about, which you might get. Really benefits, if you remember, we increased Wednesday night, uh the pension plan for the current year, it's ninety three. This does not reflect what the town approved.
Right, that's here. I can, I can give you what that number is.
That number is going, so um, so um, I would expect a whole lot left in that.
Yeah, that's a hundred and twenty eight. The payment, the total payment this year will be a hundred and twenty eight, nine, five, zero.
And who knows, insurance, we are still awaiting periodic claims, so maybe a little bit, maybe a little bit, but nothing. Uh also getting us ready for, if there's going to be surplus this year, we will. I hope. Um police department, uh and the introduction that Angus gave, I believe that every time we look at the police department budget, that bottom line funded throws off the ability to really have a conversation about what the police department costs. And you have to keep saying, well, in revenues, there are certain dollar amounts. Where this thought came up, we could put it someplace else and get it out of here. And they get a little bit easier to monitor. We seem to be supportive of that idea. Fire department, I, while they have a surplus here, they always weren't able to play their way to. Fire marshal, I wouldn't be surprised to get a few thousand dollars back. Communication center, uh value share, now value share, Angus, we still are mysterious. We have paid them, what do we, oh, no.
No, that's not, the communications work.
Value share communications contract.
Yeah.
Paid them seventy, we paid them fifty three. That's all gone. That's a contract.
That's all gone, that's a contract, yeah.
Expecting there. Civil preparedness, are we going to spend that civil preparedness fifteen hundred? We certainly spent it in it uh COVID.
All right, we may not.
Regardless, it's already spent. Highway department, I would, how far you want to go with this again? I believe we're either going to barely break even or go slightly over.
I think we're probably going to go over in this just because I know that we're working on um our equipment.
Ah, everyone should take note that sand and salt, Angus potentially spent money uh put into this lineup as opposed to uh store of condensate, which is one of the things, but those two will net out and see we've overspent the condensate on sand.
Yeah, that's just, you know, that was just so we could be better see it, you know.
Sorry, can we not expect much coming back from those folks, if there is any?
No. No, we, we got a lot of overtime, a lot of, a lot of equipment maintenance.
Um I wouldn't expect waste removal. I'm assuming we're going to spend all that.
Can I, can I, just a quick, quick, the, the um, the street lighting? That's all the, the sidewalk lighting, right?
Yeah.
I mean, if you go through a lot of towns, you see a lot of towns are going to put solar panels on. Has anybody?
No, I have not heard of that.
The town of Colchester, all their, all theirs have solar panels on.
No kidding.
And I didn't know if that was something that we, we as a town should.
I have not heard of that. I haven't seen it.
We don't own our poles, right?
We do not own our telephone, our, our streetlights. Um we put new, we, we, we tran, or converted them all to LED four or five years ago. Um but we don't own them. I think Chester went through that process four or five years ago and actually bought all of them.
They bought all in the center town or the whole town?
The whole town. Um and it's yeah, there's pluses and minuses. I just think it was right where it goes. But that's, I'm going to look into that solar.
Colchester, they've got a solar panel on each one of them.
I'm guessing they might own them.
Yeah, I, I assumed that we did. I didn't know we didn't.
But you know, on a snowy, snowy night, I'm not sure you're going to, that's when you need to light. I don't know how it works.
I don't know how they work it.
Yeah, it works great all, it works great all day with the sunshine.
Park and Rec, they have quite a bit left that I just don't know. They have some funding programs, which obviously they didn't do this year, so I'm assuming you're not going to see any surplus there, if it is. Political subdivisions, there's no surpluses. It is actually, it's minor, minor deficit. Um interest payments, they're all going out. Elementary school, I would imagine. Well, I don't know, I've heard they do. Thank you. Are they going to spend all their money?
Who?
Elementary school.
Um no, they're not going to spend it.
Oh, so you think they made a couple.
We'll get, we'll have some surplus.
Uh and the forty thousand dollars of capital to town, which for the elementary school, that is still earmarked will work at the end of the year.
Oh yeah, yep. No, we've got it. In fact, I'm meeting over there next week with the library, uh carpet there. You know, we had a project planned to get, to eliminate, to replace that carpet. Um but that section of the building had never been checked for asbestos. They found asbestos underneath that. It changed the scope of that project considerably.
Are you talking about the kitchen?
No, the library. Did I say kitchen?
No, you said a floor.
Oh, the floor of the library, I'm sorry. At the elementary school, not the library.
Oh, oh, oh.
I thought you meant the library and their kitchen floor, they want it replaced.
Their kitchen floor is, is going, that's in next year's budget.
Yeah, right.
Sorry about that. I thought, I thought we were talking elementary school.
You got to learn what in this year's um county buildings.
Yeah.
You have a twenty three thousand, I assume you've got that earmarked, but in, yes. Uh Regional Forum, um they will call all those dollars. I want to expect. That question. Capital. Fire, we had a fire car here during high boost of it. The elementary school roof, there was so many uh unspent, completely spent. Uh how is the park operating? Eight thousand dollars. I assume that's not happening, correct? All right, folks, I don't know how to, after we went through that adventure. I don't see a whole lot being left there, but I do see it's coming in. I do decide at some degree, surplus, nothing major. And if you remember, not included in this budget, it's a course. There is several things that we approved. We're not in our budget, but we'll call upon them.
And what's a three, um revaluation three hundred?
Yes, yes.
What is that?
Uh every building, every five years, the town is required to do a revow of its uh property values. Um and it costs about a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Several years ago, we began to ask citizens to pay a quarter, twenty percent of it, so that we would not have to move that into the budget in that year. And so those dollars sit here, which is something else we need to get the county to help us do.
It's one of those, similar to that police thing. It's nice to have a fund set aside for it as opposed to.
Because it looks like it will go to surplus. And it is counted as surplus.
Yeah, exactly.
Except to us, it is an earmark dollar.
Yeah. Same thing, same thing with that, you know, Parks and Recreation, as we were talking about earlier with, with the auditors. We oftentimes, in fact, the uh, the carnival was started as a fundraiser specific to raising money for the playscape, I guess they're calling them now, jungle gyms, wherever they are. But it didn't have a line. It went into the, in the way, into the surplus. And then when it came time, it's like, hey, remember?
Yeah. Done with, yeah, and that's done in many towns.
It is.
Uh and, and so Park and Rec, I trusted years ago, I got picked by this, I ran a whole tournament, paid a lot of money, and in fact, we did the money, so.
Yeah.
We had a way of going for it, so. That worked out. We're going to keep very good track of it.
Yeah, I, I think it does.
It sounded like the auditor said it was easy to do for Park and Rec.
Park and Rec is already statutorily available.
But if we wanted to do it on the other thing, it would be a more, it's, you know, whatever.
Yep.
Park and Rec is almost a no-brainer.
I think they're good ways, they're good ways to go. They just, they just make it so the public doesn't have to look for things right there. And, and we're also able to just um.
Park and Rec, that's exactly what they have. The park actually placed a crack of it periodically arrive and ask part of the pack and they'll start about, it's pretty pressing to me.
So uh I have no reason to suggest that we are not comfortable in our expenditures leaning slightly on a surplus, sorry. Unless anyone is, is very, so. And again, there are numbers we did not include in here, which will put us into our surplus.
There are, but there are also um, there are also numbers that will, might balance that out, so I think.
Okay, that is a.
Don't think you're going through each other.
Yeah, that makes me nervous.
All right, does anyone else have any items that we want to discuss, other than they're looking forward to the next workshop for you? Oh, God, thank you.